We have to stop you this double and you sent it through your package if you thought.
I did.
Here's a copy here.
Um, when did you send that out?
Um, not this week, the last week.
It was the initial package.
Okay.
I'm ready to use one of your two five meal packages.
Okay, they match your shirt.
Yeah, and my earring.
And can you grab those Christmas cards that are of Mason C. and Simon's?
Okay, I got it now.
You can slip on tip into whichever one I'm hanging up to.
Hey, it's water, okay.
She didn't have no strainer. Hey, hey. Well, she's in the back.
Good.
She's good. Yeah, here's a brown, a black brown.
Yes. Do you understand?
I don't know. I don't know. That's an outfit that we're out of the.
You're. You're. Yeah, and the, I wore it without the sweater today. It's been a thousand. Same. I've created.
That's not what I made.
The next year. Did she show you where it was?
No. Yeah. Correct.
Yeah. So, um, this was. Yes. I guess. I. And then just. This is. I'm. 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 This was. I. Where. And. We're sitting. Our. It's very special. It's down. I think. Um. What do you say? It's weird. And then. I read that. The transition period of space at least.
He didn't. I have to think. He should be at the office.
Yeah.
He's.
Go on.
We were. And then we get.
He was a person. But I didn't see her. Kevin, he had.
Well, yeah. We will.
And they have none of it about, you know. The.
Oh, okay, I didn't know he knew that.
No, I didn't know about that.
Thank you.
But I think that's the problem when you solve.
Yep.
I'm flying. They're well, they're coming better than they are. They are so excited. I took them in the hand last Saturday. And, um, we made the line for an hour. He was pissed off because he got there by the other car, the other car. She was like, hi, I go far as this.
She was proud.
Wasn't he?
Yeah. She was, she would be bored. She didn't go anywhere for eight months. Not people like Terry, you know. Yeah. And she wasn't very concerned about. He could. And I just couldn't acknowledge. The other ones. Yeah. Appreciate.
Yeah. I'm glad to see you.
I'm sorry I came up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was Nancy. I know. Well, I mean, I know. Yeah, you want to. I had Barry up there this week. We didn't ask for the battery, must be there.
It's. I can hold it. Well, you get it tonight. You just sort of said that you can't. How are you? You're going, how are you?
We do this every year. We go to the same place every year.
Yeah. We're still there. We have a trial. Yeah. Oh, it's a woman. I'm love. And, um, um, she's. There's. That's where they. Thank you. There's. There's. There's.
Wow, that's bigger. Or you think.
He has lived there and he worked with. And now they do. It's more. I don't know. I don't see.
Oh, it's right. I play a little time every year. Yeah. Come on. Yeah. Right, he was a nice person. And then. Yep, I have reaction some. We are. She didn't buy our. But I'm. I'm sure. He wants to make it up for himself. So. Our house is currently there. Well, we signed.
How are you? Matt. To you. I was saying to the front door and I called her and she just. I'm going to do.
Yeah. 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 Thank you.
Sorry about.
So. I'm safe.
Everything. I am. But I can't really see you. See better than hey. Um, but they remember.
Folks, I've got six thirty-two by my watch and phone, so it's, it's time for us to start. We'll just bow heads in a moment of silence before we start the meeting. Amen. Commissioners, you've seen the forum agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt it? I have a motion from Commissioner Alexander. Do I have a second? Second from. Is your, is it, is it Fouché? Okay, I have a second from Commissioner Fouché. She's been gone so long, we've forgotten who she was. All those, all the, leave the name tag on. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Agenda is adopted. Floor is open for public forum. It's an opportunity for people in Montreat to ask questions of the commissioners and receive answers, or let us take it into, under consideration, and we will get you an answer. So the floor is open.
My name is Nancy Midget, and I live at 168 Oak Lane. And I'm here tonight wearing my Firewise hat. Um, I made a, we, we operate under the auspices of Land Care, and I make a report every year to Land Care. But after four years of operating Firewise, having received status as a town, as a whole town of Firewise status, I thought I would send a report, which I believe you have received in your packet. So I don't plan to read it. I would like to say that I think in four years, we have met many of our objectives. We certainly had opportunities to educate people, to make presentations. Uh, over fifty people have asked us to do a property assessment of what they could perhaps do on their property to reduce the risk of wildfire destroying their home. I also asked people to send me hours that they spend cleaning fire fuel debris out of their yard. These hours are important because that, combined with the cubic yard report that I get from the town in terms of debris removal, is an important part of our renewal of Firewise certification. Uh, what I was a little, perhaps distressed about, as I made up the chart that I shared with you, is that this past year, we've had a pretty significant reduction, not only in terms of the number of hours that people have reported spending removing debris, but also in terms of the cubic yards that the town has spent removing debris. I don't have any great poll to share with you about why this has happened, but informally, I've asked a few people why they didn't report as much as they did last year, because I have a very detailed spreadsheet of who reported what and when. Thank you very much, Mayor Helms, by the way, for all of your reports. Um, and the, the response that I generally get is that they can get the leaves away from their house. It's easy to blow them away. It's much more problematic to actually stuff them into the bags to remove them. So what happens is people will blow leaves away from their house, but where they end up is piled up away from their house, but underneath the mountain laurel and the rhododendron, which is also what happens on many side streets in Montreat. When they blow the leaves out of the road, I can walk down Louisiana Road, and they're nicely out of the ditches and off the road, but they're two feet high underneath the sides with the rhododendron and the mountain laurel. Now, the problem with this is, leaves, of course, are the number one fuel for wildfire. Rhododendron and mountain laurel are both highly flammable. And so if the leaves catch on fire, and they're two feet high, they're going to burn, the rhododendron and the mountain laurel will catch on fire. That will carry the fire up to the canopy, the smaller portions of the tree, the twigs, even if there are no leaves there. Wildfire spreads very rapidly through the canopy as well as through the leaves. So I would like, our Firewise committee would like to ask the town, um, to explore the cost effectiveness of adopting for next year a plan whereby some sort of vacuum equipment could be used to come through Montreat on specific days, well announced to the public. We would put our leaves out, not in bags, but along the road, like Black Mountain is practicing this year, I think, and then they would be vacuumed away. This could also help the town, because they could be vacuumed on the smaller side streets instead of either blown underneath the mountain laurel and the rhododendron, or blown into a pile and moved out with a truck and a front end loader. So I would ask, Firewise Committee, uh, supported by Land Care, would ask the town council to please consider, uh, this alternative method of removing the number one fuel for fire from our community. I thank you for your attention, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
So, Black Mountain is contracting their leaf service, and, um, I know that they, they've been frustrated by the, the level of service they're, they're receiving is slow. Um, I, I think the leaves are staying, you know, along the side of the road longer than they would like. But, you know, we could potentially look into, um, different folks who offer the same service who might do a better job.
Or even our own people.
That's also a possibility.
It's funny, I've got somewhere at the house, during the Christmas parade, I was helping line up, and there's a, a group of people who have their own trucks, who, uh, contract. And I'll get you that, that card and that number and so forth. And next year, they're going to be even built, they're going to build a larger vehicle for collecting leaves. I didn't tell them about Montreat, and we were even thinking about it, so I'll, I'll get you the card and let you talk to them, okay?
Sounds good.
Well, well, thank you, and I do appreciate all the, the time that many Montreeters spend, not only getting up leaves, but Firewise is very happy for me to report hours of pruning. Those hours count. Pruning the rhododendron, pruning the mountain laurel, uh, cutting back trees, trimming trees, all of those hours can, uh, can count. Um, and I do appreciate, I appreciate being able to put notices in the Montreat Minute. When I send one to Tom, he'll always put it out, and of course, MRA runs one every week. But you know how it is when things run every week and people just sort of look over them? Um, so that's why I don't send something to Tom more often than I do, because I figure it won't maybe get looked over if it's just every once in a while. But I do appreciate the support of everyone who has participated in the program. We're pleased with what we've been able to do so far, but there's always room for more.
Nancy, the people in Montreat are very much more aware of Firewise than they've ever been before because of your efforts, and we do appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate your hearing me tonight. Thank you.
I think so. I actually, if I remember correctly, I want to say that those leaves get chipped and then recycled to you, to be used as fertilizer. I think that's correct.
What we, what they used to do in Gastonia, Gastonia had their own wastewater treatment plants for sewer. And, uh, they would gather leaves, and they would mix them with the dried sludge and let them sit for about a year, and then they sold them for about five dollars a truckload for people to put on their gardens and so forth. And those things really moved out and were great. I got a load one year, and I got a lot of crabgrass I didn't want, but. They, they always cleaned it out. They, it, it was amazing, and they're, I think they're still doing, they called it, oh, garden gold or liquid gold, not liquid gold, but garden gold or something like that.
Angie, do you know what the status of, uh, the property, the MRA town property up on Oklahoma is for dumping leaves?
They don't own it all. That's the problem. They gave permission for us to do that, and then part of that land is privately owned, and, uh, so we can't do that anymore.
And, uh, MRA doesn't own it either?
They own part of it. They don't own all of the plate, all of where, uh, the stables are. You know, that's always been an assumption, that was MRA. They don't even own all that land.
But we can look at, we can look at, uh, leaf pickup alternatives as part of the budget, for sure. I think it's a good idea.
Look at the cost of a vacuum, too.
When they go through the vacuum, they go through the propellers also, and they're shredded.
Yeah.
And it's, it reduces. I, I used to have a vacuum system, I think it was Toro, go around my yard in Bessemer City, and vacuum thing on the front of it, and it shredded them. It really did. And, uh, of course, I wasn't that worried about Firewise at that time, Nancy. All went in my garden. Is that a stranger? Come on up, Tom.
I'm Fris, 98 Fris Road. Um, I'd like to hear some, um, an update on the, on the bridge, covered bridge, and I'm thinking that, I'm hoping that by next year at Christmas, we'll have it lit up just like those two beautiful trees right outside here. Wouldn't it be nice?
How do you get that, Tom?
Right. A few ways. Tom, for her and I have been, uh, we, we ended up trying work with the Virgin Mountain House, uh, MCVR2, we're in CBR2 to other contract. And control them. Using federal funds, we were bringing it, supplementing of the ones that have, uh, we had, I think, a total of, I'm not sure how many numbers, number and numbers, it would be, but over $200,000 of the grant funds. And that was net, this, Boston, we had that, but, but unfortunately, by the time we got to somewhere around the first of August, the budget for that work had gone to over a million dollars, a million dollars. And at that point, and one, one meeting, it went up about $300,000 in the meeting. So we finally, and, and Audrey said, this is just not going to work for us. We, we obviously can't make up the difference between, uh, with the grant and what, what you say, the bridge is going to cost more than expectation. So we call, we, we said, we're, we're not going to work if you want it, and we'll surrender the federal funds, because what, a lot of the driving costs were, were expenses to federal funds for requiring these things. And so, them, uh, it comes, that's a suggestion. We created a number of local funds for work with structure and development experience, uh, and it sort of had a roundtable discussion with them, the last meeting was a couple weeks ago, about different ways to approach it, bring the bridge, the budget. And, uh, we basically wanted to turn it over to town staff, uh, to get more on following sort of that formula, but, uh, it's going to take some time, and I, I don't want to make any promises, it's going to be done, but we do believe we have an approach that, uh, that will, will work and put us with, we just building the bridge. Do you have anything?
I don't really have any substantive update, but I will say that, um, Barry, the public, Barry Kreisman, the Public Works Director and I, it's kind of the top of our priority list right now, and I think that we, we have some good ideas, and, um, now we're just kind of in the process of contacting the right people and, and trying to get it off the ground again.
For the right donation, it could be the Tom Fris Bridge. Who else, please? Anyone? Any questions at all? Okay, looks like we're going to adjourn until seven o'clock, which will be about 12 minutes from now. Do I have a motion to adjourn until seven o'clock? Have a motion from Commissioner Widmer. Do we have a second? Second from Mayor Pro Tim. Blake, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Ayes carry. We stand adjourned.
Sorry, internet working? That's Angie's. Mason, are you on the internet? Are you on the internet?
We're doing very.
Not connecting. Okay.
It's Chinese.
Yeah, okay.
Especially talking. I mean.
Water, water.
The possibility.
Pretty short.
Just. Three thirty-five. Four years. And so.
I give that's my. Yeah.
And they could do the work.
Who's paying?
For. But I think words, depending on the matter.
Oh, gosh, are you all going to be here Christmas? Are you flying? So Allegiant goes there? Allegiant flies.
Every week.
Right before. Yeah, that's what I fly Florida. Cheap, cheap.
And we'll all be here. Okay. Yeah.
You do have, um, a.
I don't get a seat assignment. I don't. Check bag.
If you ever need to call on him. He was also.
I have a carry-on. We didn't see much of Australia because we flew in there and stayed on the boat.
How do you spend the last day?
Five or six days, and we, we did Sydney. We saw the Opera House and the things around Sydney, and then we sailed up to where they were going to sell the boat. So we spent the next week getting the boat offloaded and fixing it up, cleaning it, and da, 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 da. So that was a work week.
Sure.
And then we flew to Australia, I mean, to Ozzy. And we did Ozzy for ten days.
Yeah, beautiful.
Beautiful, everybody says. But you know, as gorgeous as it was, the United States. Just a beautiful scenery. I think here, you've got a, you've got so much to see.
I'll look up on. Applying the Christmas lights, though.
There, it's more concentrated, but it was gorgeous, and the people are so nice. Yeah.
What's awesome about. You see.
Well, and they, and I went to the museum, actually went to Auckland Museum twice. Uh, no, yeah, in Auckland. And I got out of that, that they resent having to send their guys to fight Britain's war. Yeah, because they had no dog in the fight, but they had to go. You know, it's a funny thing, they're not, they're independent, but they still call King Charles their something. He's got a title there, so they're very loyal to King Charles, but they're not a subject of. Right.
Right.
But the people are very, very nice. Low crime, the roads had no litter, it was very clean. It was just a gorgeous. They are, and they couldn't have been kinder. And when we were on the boat, we were in, uh, at a dock in Sydney, and we were the only sailboat, every other boat was a motorboat. Uh, and they were all, they called us the sailors, and everybody wanted to come down. And when they saw Tampa, Florida on the boat, they were like, really? You sailed here from Tampa, Florida? Couldn't believe it. So, everybody wanted to hear the story. They were just- They, they sold the boat in Australia, and they're back in Tampa. So, Jackie's going to start ninth grade in January at a Catholic school, and Luke's can't go in in the middle. Yeah, she'll get a good education. There was another private school I wanted them to go to so badly. But, anyway, she chose that one. And, uh, so she'll start in January, but they don't take students, they have a trimester for fifth grade, so they couldn't take Luke now. So, he'll start in August, so they'll finish out homeschool. Well, they're tan, but they really tried to protect themselves from the sun. So, Kevin had a, Kevin had a melanoma before he left, so they were very careful. But they swim like fish. They got, they got certified in scuba, and they also, and when they were in Fiji, they got certified for freediving. And Luke was diving down 30 feet. Well, and they, see, they don't have any nuns anymore, so. I don't think that school has nuns in it. Yeah. Oh, gosh. Well, the nice part about this school is they live right around the corner, and they can walk. They love Tampa. See, they met at the yacht club, so, and, so Kevin bought, before he got home, he'd already bought a J-24, it's a 24-foot sailboat. All of them are built exactly the same, they weigh the same, they're built the same. So, when you go in a J-24 way, race, which they have all over the world, you're racing skill, not boat. Right. You're racing skill. So, Kevin's really excited because Luke wants to race. So, thanks, you're okay? Yeah, and he was so hesitant to do anything. Two for one. How old is he now? Oh, my gosh. How old are the others? Seven o'clock.
Let's all stand together, place the flag, say the flag to the ladies, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, with the recognition, or the nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution, of justice, for all. This is among the signs before we start.
Mr. President, you have the agenda as presented, and sent to you. The way the motion goes off the agenda is presented.
So move.
The motion, Mr. President, change it after second. So, the second, Commissioner Widmer, many discussions, all those papers, the motions are adopted, I think at the same time.
Aye.
Eyes carry. Just want to wish everybody in Montrity, especially our staff, Merry Christmas. Hope you enjoy your holiday. Appreciate all y'all do all year long, and we try to say thank you, all things we possibly can. If you would just relay that, and go to the staff.
Uh, we'll do it. Yes, absolutely.
Now, anyone who can cover the consent agenda, please, ma'am?
Sure. So, on, on the consent, consent agenda this evening, we have the board retreat minutes from October 24th, public forum minutes from November 9th, and council meeting minutes from November 9th as well. And then, uh, I guess, I do, just a couple of things I want to mention. Um, tomorrow, in the Montrite Minute, there will be a survey from the Black Mountain Fire Department. If everyone could just take a few minutes to take that, that would be very helpful for them. I told them I would mention it. And then just wanted to remind everyone that bear hunting season is back in session until the first of January, so just be sure that you're being safe, and if you have any activity that you feel like you need to report, just give us a call here at Town Hall.
So, everybody be careful wearing black, really close to our-
Side right now. No telling. We have received administrative reports from the Administration Department, Planning and Zoning, the Police Department, Public Works and Water Sanitation, Streets Finance, and additional planning and zoning information. Comments?
That's, that's not right.
Okay.
It wasn't transferred.
Would you come to me?
Yeah, come. Thanks, Rachel.
It wasn't transferred to cover. It was, um, to cover the loss. It was transferred initially to cover the water, um, the well cleaning from the ARPA funds. So, that's why it was transferred, but what it looked like, because of the error, um, with the auditors, it looked like that it was transferred to cover because she had moved it back to the ARPA funds, but then had to move it back.
So, we didn't move general fund money?
It was ARPA fund money.
ARPA.
Yes, yes.
But it was intended to be that way. It was in the budget.
It was intended to be that way, to cover the well cleaning that was approved to pay out of the ARPA funds.
Yeah, no, that's okay, but we, we would like to see, you know, the water fund be self-sustaining.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Floor's open for public comment. Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Shirley Mitchell, 201 Harmony Lane. Today I had time to read town minutes, et cetera, and I would encourage all of our citizens to read about this retreat that you all took. I couldn't believe that you started at eight in the morning and finished at 11 something PM. It was so instructive, and it was instructive to me to see how the town council was, I guess you hired some people to direct the questions. I just found it fascinating, and of course, the staff had to be there to be available. It's so eye-opening as to what you faced. I, I was really struck by it, and it's on page four, if you go back. It was great.
We did finish before lunch.
It was just a little typo.
Oh, well, good. I'm glad to hear that. But I just thought it was so interesting how you were given little stickies, and if five were up there, boy, I knew that was really important. Anyway, I, I would encourage everyone to read it. It was good.
Thank you, Shirley. And you, you should know this crowd doesn't miss lunch. Any other comment, public comment? If not, we'll move on. Nothing under old business, but under new business, a consideration of financial policies. Savannah?
Thank you. So, we have the comprehensive financial policy, the debt management policy, and the fund balance policy in your packets tonight. Believe that we are going to pull the fund balance policy off. I just, I think that we need some time to, to simplify the language a little bit. I want to make it a little bit more understandable and a little bit shorter before we get it in place. So, if we could, um, pull that one off and just deal with the comprehensive, um, financial policy and the debt management.
Before we go, then, let me get a motion to pull the fund balance portion of that item off of the agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, table the fund balance policy, uh, but proceed with the comprehensive financial policy and the debt management policy.
I have a motion from Commissioner Widmer. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Alexander. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to pull it signify by saying aye. Eyes carry.
Okay, so, I like we talked about, um, when we met, um, in our workshop to, to discuss some of the policies that we are creating. The comprehensive financial policy, a lot of this is already in place. These are things that staff is already doing. We just need to get it written down somewhere and solidified that, that these are the processes we follow. Um, and then, of course, the debt management po, policy, um, is, is something that the Local Government Commission, which is, um, the State Treasurer's Office, they would like us to have in place, just to deal with, you know, um, how we take out, how we deal with debt. And, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have about that.
Okay, Commissioners. Any questions of Savannah?
I want to thank Rachel. She, she has done the, the majority of the work on these. She's worked with the LGC, the Local Government Commission, and I think that they're very well done, so. Yes, those are coming down the line. We'll be, we're going to be very policy-heavy, I, the next six to eight months, probably. Yeah.
Okay, this is what we get for getting a city manager. Now, we get everything, all the i's dotted and the t's crossed.
Okay, yes. We'll make that, we can make that change. Thank you.
Any other questions or suggestions? Okay. Need a motion to adopt which ones? Comprehensive, uh, policy or? What do you need adopted since we pulled one?
The comprehensive financial policy and the debt management policy.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt those.
So move.
Have a motion from Commissioner Fouche. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, and we'll come back to the fund balance policy at another meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Floor's open for public comment. You won't believe how fast this meeting's going to go tonight, folks. Okay, we have none. Uh, Commissioners Communications? Any Commissioners Communications?
Absolutely, I think that sounds great.
Good. Thanks for doing that. Anyone else? Comments?
Shirley stole my thunder. Like Shirley, I, and I was in the meeting, Shirley, so I know what went on. I just enjoyed reading those minutes so much, and, uh, it is a wonderful archive. So, thanks to Angie for being as detailed as she was, um, and you, Savannah, for, uh, directing that whole effort. I think it's a really good first step for us, um, as a, as a new team with new leadership, uh, from you, uh, for the future of this town. Especially combined, uh, with the, the comprehensive plan.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else?
No, it's good. That's why we do it.
Anyone else? Okay. You got some dates to remember. The Board of Adjustment regular monthly meeting is Thursday, December the 21st, five o'clock here at Town Hall. Town offices are closed Christmas, for the Christmas holiday, Monday and Tuesday, December 25 and 26. Sanitation services will resume on Wednesday, the 27th. Montreat Land Care.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one thing as a reminder on that one? That the convenience center will be open when folks have lots of extra guests and they have trash that's building up two days before it's gonna get picked up. The convenience center will be available.
Good. And while you're on that, I've noticed a lot of people, not a lot of people, but some people have been throwing trash in the dumpster in front of the barn where they're doing renovations on the barn. That's not a garbage dumpster. That's a refuse dumpster of stuff they're tearing out. And the bears have found it. I don't know where the bears are now. They're probably hibernating, but they found it. And we don't throw garbage in there. Montreat Land Care, January the 3rd, nine o'clock, Town Hall. Planning and Zoning Committee, spring training. Spring training. January the 11th, from 10:00, 10:00 to 11:30, excuse me, here in Town Hall. January Town Council Meeting is the 11th of January, seven o'clock here. Forum will begin at 6:30. The Town Hall is closed for Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January the 15th. Sanitation services resume on Tuesday, the 16th. Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, January the 18th, 10:30 AM in Town Hall. Tree Board, January 23rd at 9:30 in Town Hall with Zoom options. Open Space Conservation Committee Special Meeting, January the 24th at 2:00 PM, Town Hall. I'm gonna do something a little different tonight than I normally do. Probably gonna stick my neck out on a limb a little bit, but it is the Christmas season. It's the last meeting of the year, so just bear with me a minute. You'll just bow your heads. And Lord support us all the day long until the shadows lengthen and the evening comes and the busy world is hushed and the fever of life is over and our work is done. Then, Lord, in thy great mercy, grant us a safe lodging, holy rest, and peace at the last. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Y'all want to stay here all night? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes carry.